Ready, thinking?
Yes.
Good evening, the City of Plymouth City Council meeting regularly for tonight, Thursday, April 11th, 2024 is now called to order. In-person participation by the public is permitted as an alternative to in-person public comment. Members of the public not attending in person may submit written comments prior to the meeting by emailing their comment to the deputy city clerk at the McHenry at cityofplummeteboard before 3:30 PM on the day of the meeting. Email public comments will be distributed to the city council and made part of the official record. This meeting is being recorded. Council chambers are real chair accessible. Special accommodations may be requested by contacting the deputy city clerk 72 hours before the meeting. At this time, we ask that please silence all cell phones or similar devices. We please have a roll call. Councilmember Amerusa.
Here.
Councilmember Sen.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin, absent. Mayor Abrilin.
Here.
Thank you, may I have a form? Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number two, approval of the city council regular meeting agenda for tonight, April 11th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the the council of a meeting as approved or as presented. Second.
It's going to move consecutive, we have a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Amerusa.
Aye.
Councilmember Sen.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mayor Abrilin.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you.
Number three, public comment. Under provisions of the government code, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time. Please submit a completed speaker's submittal form to the deputy city clerk. Comments are limited to three minutes or less, and speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence. For public comments on agendaized, on agendaized items, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. The city council is prohibited from materially discussing or acting on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of emergency nature or an urgent need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. We have received written public comment. That will be entered into the record from Amy Gomes, resident of Plymouth, writing requests regarding restoring virtual public access via Zoom. Have we received any other written comment? No, we have not. Harvey?
No, we have not.
Okay, thank you. And is there anybody here in city hall who would like to make public comment at this time?
Hi, good evening, my name is Michael Spinetta, I too am a resident of Plymouth. And I just wanted to show you, I wanted to follow the lead of Amy Gomes, and I wanted to omit submitting the last six pages of her petition onto record. So I just handed the last six pages of her petition to you. And I know they're not on record, just like how she did, so I just wanted to be the same. And the part of her petition that she omitted, kind of like how she admits parts of facts and things through the petition include the comments, the public comments, or however you want to say it, on her petition. That include her being quoted as her publishing that the anti-Semitic Zoom bombing wasn't really that big of a deal. In fact, she's published that twice online, even though federal and state and local agencies investigated the incident. I just thought, you know, when you take into account what this public comment is, is that you should take into account what happened. And I think another thing we should talk about is how she did apologize, which I thought was very grand. And that she misquoted one of the council members. I just thought that was very important to say, and maybe it took me posting online that video, and I don't know, maybe I'm grandizing myself. But I think it's, I think it's important to point out when she was wrong, and that she pointed out she was wrong in her petition. And when you make a petition, I just wanted to, you know, speak into the air that it's, it's important to have all your facts right. And like saying that you were, the petition says that it was the sole jurisdiction of the county to stop Zoom, when in fact, there were at least two other cities, and there were other public agencies that had already stopped Zoom. That's an important fact to say correctly, and I just, I just think it's really important to get your facts out there right when you're trying to have people back you up, especially if you were, like, say, a former public representative, like Los Chinga partner on their very private political group online, that actually says that they threaten people. And if they talk about quotes or screenshots from their group. And I know that one of them is representative down in the Bay Area still, so I hope that that area allows that still for their representatives to speak like this. And I saw they are opening up their political groups, other jurisdictions in Plymouth, and perhaps it's important to, that they open it up to maybe where they work as a government official. So, thank you for your time, and I hope we enjoy this weather, even though we'll get another rain, and we don't have to let our guards speak, so, all right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there anything else here at city hall who would like to make a public comment? Yeah, not at this time. So in a close public comment. Presentations, proclamations, appointments, there are done tonight. Number five, consent calendar items. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless, before the city council votes on the motion to adopt. Members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. 5.1 correspondence. You have received some correspondence from PGE and Comcast. 5.2, approve the regular meeting minutes of March 25th, 2024. 5.3, accept the March 4 register. Item 5.4, adopt resolution number 2024-04 condemning antisemitism. And I would like to take the opportunity to read that, if that's okay?
Sure.
Resolution of the city council of the, I'll read that. Resolution of the city council of the city of Plymouth, State of California condemning antisemitism and all forms of hate. Whereas the city council of the city of Plymouth recognizes the fundamental rights of all individuals to live free from discrimination and prejudice, and recognizes everyone's contribution to the greater community. And whereas antisemitism is an age-old form of hatred and bigotry, which continues to manifest itself in various forms, including but not limited to verbal attacks, vandalism, and violence against Jewish individuals and institutions. And whereas the rise of antisemitic incidents poses, poses a threat not only to the Jewish community, but also to the broader principles of acceptance and diversity that our city upholds. And whereas over the past several months, the city of Plymouth and other areas of Amador County have been subjected to despicable acts of hate speech and other intolerable behaviors. And whereas such acts of hate and ignorance have no place in a civilized society. And whereas combating antisemitism requires collective action and unwavering commitment from all levels of society, including local government, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Plymouth unequivocally condemns antisemitism in all of its forms and manifestations, offers it, offers its unwavering support to those groups that have been targeted, will work towards a community freedom and tolerance and bigotry, and affirms its commitment to promoting understanding, tolerance, and respect among all residents regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, or background, and pledges, pledges to join in unity with our neighboring cities, Amador County, local organizations, law enforcement agencies, educational institutions, and community leaders to combat antisemitism in all forms of hate. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on the consent? Consent calendar items, any written public comment?
No.
Have we received any written comment on?
Nothing besides what was already spoken.
Okay, I'll stop asking you then. Any public comment from anybody here in city hall on the consent calendar? Any public comment? Opposing public comment to the consent calendar. And looking for a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4 as it stays in our agenda.
We have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, we have a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Amerusa.
Aye.
Councilmember Sen.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mayor Abrilin.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you.
Seven, regular agenda item 7.1, receive information on park grant and the cost to give direction on which project to complete for McGee Park. And can we please have a staff report?
The item for you tonight is to select a project for the park grant funds. This item has been before you in the past. We've wavered from splitting the funds to putting the funds back together to go towards just McGee Park. So there have been some delay in getting the park grants funded. I mean, the park grant going to construction. The, there's been community outreach on this project with two community meetings to, that we also have public input to, and had a list of projects. And at the November 15th meeting, there was a list provided to the council, and the two top projects were to the shade structure and the ADA access from Landham Street. And option one in the packet is the ADA access from Landham Street with a cost of $152, $292, $50. The permanent shade structure was not cost estimated due to the fact that it would block, completely block the gazebo that's in the park, which is the main focus in the park at this time, and we didn't feel that we wanted to block the main focal part, point in the park, because the we're trying to enhance the park, not block the main focal part, point. So options two and three were included and cost estimated. Option two was cost estimated because there are major things that need to be upgraded in the bathroom that the city engineer and public works had pointed out. So we cost estimated those things for the bathroom. And option three was cost estimated due to many comments from the public that they wanted to see upgrades in the playground. And so we cost estimated that to show what the actual costs were to upgrade the park. And so before you are those three upgrades, and option four is a bench seat around a park where it would add additional seating to the park for people to sit during events and such. The clock is ticking on the grant. We do have some time to, to finish out the grant, but we need to keep in mind that construction, anything can happen during construction, and it takes a long time. Once the council picks a contract, we have to, we have to draw out the plans. We have to do bid documents, go out to bid, select a construction company, and do all of that process, and then, and then do, start the construction and do that process. All of that takes time, and so keep that in mind when you're selecting which project you want to do. So these, these are all before you, there are other options that were on the list from the November 15th meeting, which were pathways. There were improved lighting. Improved lighting can't be done at this time because we are maxed out on electrical in the park. We don't have any additional electricity that is capable in the park at this time. We are working with PG&E, but as of right now, there's no extra electrical electricity that we can expand in the park. And the other item was to move the tables, to move all of the tables to the upper part of the park, making a party area. Those were the other items that were at the top of the list after the community meetings. So with that, I'll turn it over to council to answer any questions that you may have, and any questions that the public may have after public comment.
I'd like to open it up for public comment, and then we can directly discussion questions, questions from the council, if that would be okay? Okay. So there's no written public comment on this, is there anybody in city hall who would like to make public comment?
Hi, I'm still Michael Spinetta, and I still live in the city of Plymouth. And I just wanted to remember a long time ago, and Pat got us all together and working to kind of combine McGee and Sharky Park together down Main Street, and I thought it was pretty neat when we all worked on that together, and seeing a lot of other people working, painting the fences in the park, and I know one of the things, there was money that used to be in the kid to fix up the playground. We lost like three different play structures there, and some of them I want to put back in personally. But, um, I know I think setting, putting in seats or something else for the kids, or something, I, I, I know we're maxed out on lights, I'd love it if we could have some more lights for an attendance since we are there later in the day when we have events. That's something in the future, it's not regarding to this money. But I guess, I, I know that it's important to focus on that, like, a couple of business owners stayed at one time here at city hall on record. And, you know, maybe there will be something for the other parks. I think we have a pretty darn nice green belt going on between, what is it, Howlett Park, I gotta get that one, the baseball field, and Veterans Park, and Lodge Hill, and that, I think, you know, if we can ever make something between Hoxview and a little park there, and coming down to, into the Main Street Park, where we used to, used to be drawn on the map to come out. I know maps are important, the Stubble North Road, which used to be, are important. I know that Golden Way used to go through, on the maps at least. And so I just wanted to thank you guys for working on this park, and we all talked about it at those meetings. And I just think it's a good deal what you choose to do, and we can work on the other parks too. I think everybody who's working on Veterans Park is pretty awesome. I'll bring that up every time this sound a minute. I, I, I think it's great seeing, you know, a dozen people working out there together. And maybe we'll just keep doing that through all the other parks and never stop. So use this money now, get more money later. If you guys can just put your minds to it and find more grants, and have this happen again, and work hard to, and specifically look for that, I think that's the most important thing, and we can hit Lodge Hill, and they'll maybe put lights on the garden there, so maybe that would help out the ambulance people next door, the American Legion. Something that benefits everybody in the areas, and, oh, there we go, I'm just rambling like a dude. Guys, have a good night again.
Any other public comment? Okay, there's no other public comment, one last public comment, and open this for staff discussion. Councilmember White? You have any comments or questions?
Commenting, I don't think any question, but comments. I like the first two options extremely, anything that makes more ADA accessible by law or maybe that just goes to, you know, having everyone have the ability to use the area. We have a lot of seniors in our area, and we have some people with disabilities, and that would be an excellent help thing. Option number two is more of self-satisfying for myself. I work in an industry where my guys are constantly looking for restaurants. And probably one of the nicest restrooms our guys all know about are the bathrooms out at Howard Park at the arena up there. Everyone goes, if you want to go to a clean, nice restroom, where the toilet flushes and everything, that's the place to go. Service workers, we're constantly looking for those areas, so I'm just saying, that's just a little bit of being in the service industry, kind of my thing in it, but I mean, all in all, option one, I, I'm in big time support of. We did, and this might be a question for councilmember Sims, actually. Your son-in-law, he spearheaded a big project with the toys over there, do you remember when that was? That was a couple of years ago, four years ago, four years ago. You know, I, I think, of course, we want the park set up for our children and our youth to enjoy. I do know that was kind of the last piece of thing that we gave up there. So slowly build it all up as a whole, that's just my opinion.
Councilmember Amerusa?
Well, okay, so here we go. Kind of playing with some different ideas here, you know, we have four options, obviously, right? One of them being option three at $260,000. But if we want one, two, and three, or one, two, and four together, we come up to $227,000, $292. So my suggestion would be we take one, one, two, and four. Or just number two. Because that's within our means, you know, we also, where we fall short, short on on some of the money from, between the grant and what it's going to cost to do any of these projects. I'm trying to, it's cheaper to do it now than it is tomorrow, it's always going to be cheaper to do it by the end of the year. Is that we do have parks money that comes from permits, which is about $29,000-ish.
Yes.
And then we have TOT tax, because that play structure that's out there right now, cost us $80,000 originally, and that was all TOT tax. So I think we could either grow this project, you know, we have the TOT tax money, we have the parks money, and we can put it together. You know, and just, and make a better project in the whole, out of the whole thing. Now that we're seeing all the parts and pieces, and all the things, kind of find the common, you know, together in one spot. Option wise. So that's my suggestion, so I don't care which direction we go with that, that's just something, when you look at the numbers and what can be done, what, what makes sense for, most paid first buck. The other thing that I'd like to add is, you know, we have that beautiful clock that got donated to us, and I know that wouldn't cost much, but maybe somehow work that in, it's only a couple thousand dollars to have that base set. You know, if we have the engineers out here already, you know, to have them kind of pick and set up the engineering to that clock base would be. So we see that it's all sort of the way that it's, so that, I suggest, just, that's a small one just to throw in on the head, on the backside. So that's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sen?
I have questions and some suggestions. My first question is, Margaret? I don't see where the matching funds is located in this $179,000. Was that on top of $179,000, or was that? I mean, there's a matching fund component in this thing, as I recall. There's no mention of that anywhere. It was $40,000. It was like, it was like $35,000, $40,000.
Yeah, it was like $40,000, yeah.
I'm presuming it's on top of the $179,000. I'm also presuming if we spend $179,000 or less, we don't have to match it. But I'm sure about that. I think it's something we'll, we'll look into, right?
Yes, I will look into that. I'm not sure.
Okay, you do, you recall matching funds component to this?
No.
I do. That came up in the last couple of months, we talked about this right after our, I think actually, I think actually Stephanie pointed out, because it wasn't mentioned in the last time we talked about this. She pointed out there was the matching, because there was originally a matching.
That's my mind, I was adding the two together, and I was, I was for the last months and months and months, I was at, I was around $220,000, which would include our matching funds.
Right.
That's just a number, and then I ran it off, I said, but we were talking about splitting it between the two parks, that's a hundred each for a full.
Right, yeah.
That's what I thought, yeah. So therefore, I think I'm right about that, but that's, yeah, I've got a big deal right now. Option number one eats all of our money up. And I, I'm with everybody here on council that ADA is very important, but don't forget, we have an ADA we have, we have an area where it's ADA at the parking lot, where you can drive, where you can drive in, we have handicap parking, and it's very, very accessible apart from, from the parking lot. Great, it's not down that, down that slope, but to put stairs in and lighting in and railing in for $179, $150,000 plus a 20%, $20,000 contingency, as well as I see in here that 150,000 dollars plus a 20%, 20,000 dollar contingency, as far as I see in here that uh, the engineer put in, it blows the whole thing out the window, one item.
Can I talk to that point for just a second?
Sorry?
Can I talk to that point for just a second?
Sure, absolutely.
So when we have events in the park, we typically close off the parking lot. So those handicap spaces are not available during events?
Certain events, but not all of it.
Almost all of the events in the park. It, those spaces are not available. Um, because um, things are put in the parking lot. Vendors are put in the parking lot and so we can't have cars driving in the parking lot because there's foot traffic in the parking lot. And so there actually isn't that ADA access there.
To go to that, can we rethink that a little bit? And make those handicap parking spaces available possibly?
Then we would lose vendors in that, in that area.
We have a parking lot for sure.
For sure.
Yeah, a little around.
At least, at least, yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, that's my thought on that because it's, it's, it's all of our money, just for that one access point. By and large.
We, we do have a lot of people coming down from Landrum Street. From the community that lives on that side of town. And it is difficult with parents with strollers to get down to the park for their, with their kids.
I was thinking that we could, we could improve that, that, that pathway and make it not quite so slippery. I see it's covered with rocks, gravel and stuff. I see people walking down. If we clean that up and put a, put a handrail along there. Obviously it doesn't help for wheelchairs and walkers, but it does help for older people that have to negotiate that hill. It doesn't make it ADA, I get that, but uh, that's, I mean, that's for another day, but. And the other, the option number three is obviously we've all concluded $260,000. We don't have that much money to even think about that. I think that included some new servicing for the kids. Play structure is still worth, where I, I personally think the wood chips are doing a great job. It's, I looked this morning, I'm looking at it and I, I can see where a couple of times a year we bring in a big loaded chips, spread it out, blend it in. It's great. It's, it's, it's soft. People, if anybody falls out of, out of the structure, I think it's a, it's a nice cushioning. So all, so I think that, that obviously we can't afford to put in astropin that whole part. Plus, it's astroturf, it's hot too. There's, there's no shade up there. Any, but that, the wood chips is, is, does not get real hot. But any kind of a, a material you put on, on there, in lieu of the wood chips, will get super hot. There's, I didn't see anything in here with regards to lighting for the play structures. I, I heard you said about the fact that we can't add any more electrical connections, but I would think that we could do a couple of uh, light towers, solar light towers, so that we can at least light that, that back corner up for the kids after the sun goes down. That, that can't cost very much.
We've got some good technology now.
What's that?
They have good technology there.
Yeah, I don't see any, it's a little bit there, but that's something we, I think we should consider. The bathroom. Everybody, I think we kind of agree that's pretty ugly. Uh, there's mention in here about expanding the size of the two bathrooms. I measured this morning, they're, they're six foot by eight feet. Plenty of room to bring in a wheelchair and turn it around there. And it's got, it already has a handrails and they're all set the right height on it. And the doorway is 35 inches, so easily can accommodate a wheelchair through that door into that room. In fact, it's bigger than the bathroom right there.
They're actually not ADA compliant?
No, I know they're not, but if, if we don't, if we don't rebuild the bathrooms, if we remodel the bathrooms, do we have to comply with everything ADA says we can do?
If you touch the bathrooms, you have to make them ADA compliant.
Paint, and just make it look better. I mean, obviously we, we talked about plumbing, but plumbing is. How far out of whack are we ADA in the bathrooms?
We're size-wise. We would have to bring the bathrooms out to the edge of the cement.
Why?
Because that's the size they need to be to have, to meet the specs of an ADA bathroom.
Those bathrooms right there don't, don't comply because they're smaller.
You're correct, they don't.
Okay. So are you saying even if we do a, if we, if we just do a, a remodel, we have to comply with every ADA? Maybe this attorney like can answer that?
Yes, my understanding is that any structural alterations?
That's no show. I'm talking about paint.
Not, well, I, I think painting, I would think no, I would, I mean, you wouldn't have to because it's not an alteration. Sure.
We have limited funds. We have, I think they're around 200,000 dollars. To, to move those walls, move, and move those doorway and expand those bathrooms, it sits right there, 68,000 dollars. I mean, we're, we're pouring through our money really fast here. So are we gonna, are we trying to upgrade the park? Are we trying to take care of one? Same, 200, 200 grand doesn't go very far. And just think, we were talking about spreading that, that money over two parks. That is beyond ludicrous, right?
10% of the money has to go towards ADA.
How much?
10%. When we pull the building.
10% of the.
Of the total money has to go to ADA.
That's, that's 20,000 dollars.
Yeah.
That won't do any of this thing we're talking about here.
Right.
The bench around the tree, lovely idea. Full of birds. What's on the bench at the end of the day? When you put a bench around a tree, I, I see a few benches around those parks. You can't sit on them because it's, you know, birds are on top of the benches. Sorry? I think it's a great idea. However, I think we could use a few more benches up there. I walked around, there's some pretty big spots up there. Certainly use a couple more benches, about table, table benches.
Um, currently it is very hard for public works to mow that lawn.
Because of benches?
Because of the tables and benches in the park.
I've thought about that. Good point.
Like that. It's personally just. That's why I said, go pick three of them and get the most bang for the buck.
Yeah.
Pick one big one up.
Yeah, a few more. No, no, it's okay.
I think that when we did the community workshops as a, as a, as a group over those couple of days, a few things that we did was, which was really helpful. We, we had to eliminate some suggestions because they just weren't feasible. And now I didn't know, it totally makes total sense that the shade structures, for example, aren't feasible. So I understand why that's not here. Um, I am looking at this and I'm thinking that um, it's option number one. Now that I've seen the price tag, it doesn't necessarily seem feasible. And the reason I say that, well, so look at the options, but I also see the, the lessons. Is that, you know, we can, we can decide to combine projects or we can give direction to do something different. I might not be the most popular person in the room by saying this, but I'd like to almost see us go back to the drawing board. And work with maybe a landscape designer, landscape architect, whoever, give them our wish list and our budget. And then we'd have to start eliminating things. And I, and I, I think that that could be done fair, fairly quickly. Um, I would also wonder if the, if it's appropriate, if the council would, would consider the idea of even forming an ad hoc committee for this. And, and yeah, please go ahead. I don't really understand. Okay. Um, but I, I kind of want to get back to what I thought was the original intent of the park grant was to almost, almost like a beautification project. And I, and I know at one of our previous meetings, I think you know, member, um, when we made the decision to combine the money that was going to be used for Lodge Hill onto the McGee Park, one of the reasons it was that we we had a discussion about this is an opportunity to do some beautification at the park. Um, to not only encourage and entice the members of our community to, to use the park. And make it a, a more inviting, welcoming space. And then also, um, the plus side of that was hopefully it would attract more visitors to the area, which would in turn help some of our local businesses. And our local businesses are screaming for more foot traffic. Um, as far as the handicap parking, um, you're right, that parking is not available when we have the vendors. Um, I've often wondered, why don't we have a, a, a handicap parking zone right out in front of City Hall? I, I wondered that. And I wonder how difficult would it be? So that during fairs or events or whatever, if that, if that handicap parking isn't available, how difficult would it be to make handicap parking available across the street? Where folks in wheelchairs, walkers, whatever, could, or anybody who needs the handicap parking. They have access to the, the crosswalk and the sidewalk. And then going into the park. Um, so I wonder if that's an option. Um, if we're going to make the entrance on Landrum Street ADA accessible, then we need to come up with some parking there also. So one way or another, it looks like we're going to have to find another place to put handicap parking. And like I said, I've always wondered why we don't have handicap parking right out in front of City Hall. Um, I know there's some zones that have been painted. I've heard that those were kind of unofficial. Somebody got out there and just put the paint. Um, why couldn't we designate an area for handicap parking, um, per 24/7? Um, but I guess I'm, I'm going back to um, wanting to kind of start all over again with the ideas that had been presented. Doug here has listed the things that were presented. Um, when we did the community workshops. And look at having somebody help us draw up some design and kind of go from there. Those are my thoughts. I, I, I'd like to see this being thought of more as a beautification project. Um, I understand, I, I can see where it's difficult to mow the lawn under the tables. Could the, and maybe I'm getting into the weeds here. Um, could we eliminate the lawn and put in, I don't know, some other type of sort of decomposed granite or something, I don't know, where they don't have to mow it. Um, where there's less maintenance for our public works people, some drought tolerant shrubs around. But again, I'm not a landscape designer, so um, I'm going to stop that, that right there. Um.
Tables aren't concrete slabs. So they, and they gotta mow around a concrete slab. That's the problem, not under the table itself.
Yeah, okay, around the table. Um, but if there was something, if it's difficult to, to mow around that cement slab, maybe something else could be put in and that's where the traps and shrubs. That's where they could be incorporated. Um, we, when this was first presented to the council a few years ago, uh, you and I were pretty new to the council and the previous city manager brought it to us. The previous city manager did have renderings or designs done by a landscape architect or designer. Um, and so there is somebody who's familiar with the city, kind of familiar with the project. Um, it would be nice to bring him back in for consultation or designs or whatever, or somebody else in the community that, that does something similar. So those, those are my thoughts, but I, I, I guess what I'm really trying to say is I, for me personally, I'd like to give direction to, to do something different than these three options. Except for the bench seat around the tree. Um, anyway, that's my thought. Um, so let me, let me go back around. Councilmember White, any other thoughts?
If you really want to, we can just keep on, we've been beating this up for a couple of years, pretty good. Uh, I don't mind if you go back on any of these ideas. Uh, I will go with a little back history. Uh, I'm sure some of you don't know, I have a brother who is mentally disabled and he goes around. Uh, last thing we want to do is screw around with ADA. That's all I said. Uh, you just don't want to do it. There are people that fight the system. And they have every right to fight the system and uh, uh, so just always keep that in consideration. I know this was a beautification project, um, back when we initially looked at it also, so um, you know, I was thinking even as far as, you know, so flowers are something almost as a memorial to, I don't want to call them, our major yards and our, for our community that we hold that high standard kind of a donation or not a donation, a memorial for those people. Um, that might be an idea that, that's all I gotta say.
Councilmember Amoruso?
Well, yeah, I'm going to agree with, with Keith on the seven months time. The issue here is that we are against timelines. We try to reinvent this wheel of third or fourth right now. I think we have some valid things to push through. That's why I suggest we pick, you know, pick the main part, but pick, you know, either three things and get a really good product at the end of the day that does deal with our ADA issues. Or go with the one project that's going to be, you know, at the same price.
Yes.
So I mean, we have those on a month, we have TOT. So we, we can, we can grow the project and make it a more cohesive project. Or we can switch wheels and find two or three other things that we want to do. I mean, I'm not saying I oppose anything, but right now we have some firm, yeah, we have some firm things that really are identified as needs. And we, like I said, we need this one up to celebrate. We are kind of like, like this matters that we are against the timelines. So we go to an ad hoc committee, we may go drive the same other two, three months. You know, another couple of sessions. The exact final answer is we are, it's a time. That's why we're talking about this today. So make tweaks if we have to. But push this project forward to get some completion sort of. We have options. Nothing written stone, that's correct. These are also just our tops. But I think we have some good things. We want three of them together, make one project out of that. Or kick the big project of the, of the, of the ground there. Cause I don't hope we can do all, again, do four of that stuff. We can do two of that, but do what else? Two sixty.
Councilmember Sim?
We have two years and three months to complete the project.
I don't want to have government projects run.
We're not building a great bridge. We're breaking apart unless we have to rebuild the uh, the restroom. Like it. Like rebuilding, yeah, which I, I personally have a hard time seeing why we have to completely rebuild the restroom. That's where, the other thing is uh, it gets hot over there. I agree a hundred percent. We can't put permanent uh, shade structures in, it's going to block everything. I, I, I think we need to go back. I, I, I think we need to go back to the shade sales that we, that we had.
We can't.
Now that we have some problems with them. But the ones we, the ones we took down were way past their prime. I think they, they do a pretty good job. It cost, I, I bought it too. But I, I think to have more, putting more trees. And I think trees would be, be, I got a great addition to the park. But of course, if we do certain things, then we're not going to have any money for shade structures or trees or a lot of things, I mean, that's just, we only have so much money to work with. I don't think we're, I, I'm not prepared to adopt anything on this tonight without going through the issues that, that I, that perhaps I don't know a hundred percent about. Uh, like our council mentioned tonight, that we have to spend twenty percent for ADA. Nor are that, these are things we have, we gotta, we gotta think about.
Ten percent.
Ten percent. Twenty thousand dollars, but, yeah, anyway, um. No, I, I, I'm not prepared to vote on any of these four items tonight, personally.
So, um, what are the wishes of the council? Um, personally, I'd, I'd like to, like I said earlier, I'd like to go in a different direction than what we have in front of us. Um, so what are, what are the wishes, or does somebody want to make a motion?
We have to provide corrections, that's all we have to do.
Yeah, yes, yeah, that's all.
I would recommend a motion if you are selecting a project.
If we were selecting a project?
Yes, if you're not, then you could provide corrections as staff to.
So if we want to select one, two, three, all of the above, then we would make a motion?
Yes.
How to vary, we're talking about that again, ad hoc, yeah.
Um, and I was going to say, if you wish to create an ad hoc committee, that should be something that should be agendized, like you could say, we want to have this on the next agenda. So then that way you can appoint members to that.
Councilmember Bob, which should be back by the, correct? I'm cool with that. We, we agendaize that, that's just my opinion, my opinion.
Is it, does the council feel like, especially for you and staff, do you feel like a, an ad hoc committee is necessary, or that? Would you just?
Yeah, lots of options, Victor.
Meet, meet and have discussions and include, we've got somebody here who has good ideas about beautification of plants and trees, all that stuff. Do we need to put an ad hoc committee together?
No, it is up to council discussion as to whether they wish to create an ad hoc committee. If you wanted to, you know, to have, uh, one or two council members essentially meet and also allow members of the public to also participate in that ad hoc committee process, and then return to council with recommendations. You're certainly welcome to do that. I think you would also want to consider timing as well, and whether that's going to achieve something different than just this current forum. Um, you could also as well provide directions to staff specifically on the things that you would be looking for, so then that way, for example, there's certain information, such as what, um, council member Sim said, um, regarding certain, um, restrictions on the use of the grant and to have that outlined, so then you can make that decision. You can certainly do that too, provide parameters to, on staff direction. Or as you had suggested, like, it's up to you entirely whether you wish to proceed with an ad hoc.
And we also table it until next meeting and, and, uh, if you have more questions or ideas, bring them back.
Yes, you can actually, um, agendaize that both. So if you are coming back and tabling this item, I would recommend that you put this on the agenda for the next meeting. And then you can also put on the agenda the ad hoc committee. And then if you decide you don't want to proceed with the ad hoc at that time, then don't proceed with that agenda item. So I would have that as a secondary, um, as well, if you feel like you need additional time.
We do that by consensus.
Yes, because it would just be, oh, sorry.
But, but before he, before he jumped in, there was something, um. So I, I was going to say something, but now that I'm thinking about it, I think it would be premature. Um, but I was thinking, how would the council feel about giving direction to city staff to reach out to a landscape designer? Or a landscape architect, I should say, um, or?
You, you realize those are really expensive. They're not cheap. I know, I had one for my mom's house, and we never used her, apparently, because of the expense. It was expensive. I mean, it's a great idea, we have Mike.
That's true, yeah. Um, and, and I guess if we, if we table this for the next agenda, or for the next meeting, we could talk about it then.
Because we would probably have to, we would probably have to put that as part of the grant. If you're going to use the rest of your perfect, that would be a component expense out of the grant.
Yeah, it's, it, I don't remember what, when Rex did this a few years ago, I don't remember what he paid um, the, the landscape designer. I, I, for some reason, I think it was five thousand dollars.
It's also very important we find out that there's matching funds then.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
It's just, it's a, a big percentage of the amount.
Yeah, it is, we're there.
And if we did a, um, something with a landscape architect, um, that money could, I suppose, come out of T O T funding?
Good.
Um, or you said, a parks fund?
Yeah, we have multiple vehicles.
Yeah, anyway, that's just, that's just my two cents.
So if we don't make a motion to, to put an ad hoc on the agenda for the next meeting, then we have to start scratch in two weeks? Or can we do it now and say, then we can decide at that point whether we want to move forward with the ad hoc committee?
Correct.
So we need to do it now, we need to put it on the agenda now? Or maybe, or, or I guess.
Well, she said that, everything to be done.
Consensus on that.
Yeah, you can to, you can have a consensus to put something on, uh, the agenda for the next council meeting, and you would have the two agenda items, so the same one as tonight. And then following that, you would have the appointment of that ad hoc. So I would imagine this kind of working out is, if at the next meeting on the same agenda item that you're tabling tonight, you decide you wish to proceed with ad hoc, at least you have it on the agenda, so then you can appoint members of the council to the ad hoc at that time. But you would not be able to appoint members tonight because it's not on the agenda.
If we don't do it now.
Okay.
Got that.
We all kind of agree with this, yeah.
To do this for?
I'm not married to anything, so. Let's get the best possible.
So we make a motion to put the ad hoc?
I don't think that.
Or two weeks from now.
So we know it, no.
You just need a consensus.
We just need consensus.
I think we can all, yeah, we can say all of that, okay. Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, I think, uh, that is it for that item.
Give it to the formators, everyone's doing their agreement.
Do you have consensus?
Yes, yes. Four thumbs up.
And then item eight, um, do we have a city manager's report?
So I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday is the Spring Family Fun Day, and there is one hundred percent chance of rain.
Oh.
That is being forecast. Don't fear, we are still having the event, we are moving things inside City Hall. We will, uh, make, Makers Market will be out in the, um, buildings. Um, Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department will have their vehicles outside. The games will be inside, so pound play and have a good time. Uh, we, uh, I have two more things to tell you, and I left my paper in my office. Come on, read my mind. We are getting a, um, robot to clean the pool. Um, it will, we'll put it in the pool and it will sweep and clean the bottom of the pool. So instead of taking staff three hours to manually sweep the pool, we'll put the robot in and it'll, and it'll clean while staff goes and does other things. So, um, there's that. We are, um, getting security for the building. That will be done next week. And we are gearing up for the pool to open up. We have a survey out on our webpage for what kind of swim lessons people want. The sur, that survey will close on Wednesday at four thirty so that we can post swim lesson schedules on the website. And people can start signing up for swim lessons on the twenty-second at eight thirty in the morning. Um, they'll be first come, first served. And we have all but one of our lifeguards hired. We have more applications than we have spots for. They're very good applications that we've received. Um, we're in a good position for the activities that we plan for the pool. So I'm very pleased with how that's going so far. We are very pleased with, uh, the responses that we've had to the survey on the swim lessons, we've had it out for ten days and we've had almost fifty responses. So we are excited for the pool to be open.
Thank you, and if there's anything else that you remember, let me know and we'll, we'll go back.
It's fine.
Councilmember White, anything you would like to share? And after we do this, then we'll go to future agenda items.
I don't have any support or anything. I'd like to apologize to the community and my constituents. Um, I just realized through an email that, um, I actually approved the minutes to a meeting without reading all the way through, and I, uh, I messed up, and, um, I wish it could be more perfect, but I'm not, um, you know, working fifty hours a week and, uh, you know, dealing with a sick parent, dealing with those things, sometimes I'll get to read all the way through the agenda. So I'm sorry for making a motion to approve an agenda on, um, word that, uh, I did not state, but I accidentally did it, and, uh, I've already been kind of informed that that's been corrected in the minutes.
We will be bringing those minutes back next meeting to correct that. We've already corrected it on our end to bring back next meeting to correct that verbiage.
So, okay, no problem, I just, you know, I'm sorry, I should have read my agenda, I'm apologizing to our community.
Can I say something to that kind of hot term? I think that, um, apologizing for, you know, not, not catching that in the minutes is one thing, and we're all busy. And I don't think it's an issue of, you know, perfection, because none of us are perfect. But I think it takes, it shows, it takes, it, it, it shows one hell of a man and a lot of character that's very impressive that you apologize for something that, I mean, it was kind of a nothing burger. And, but you're, it shows how much you care about the community and that you are always willing to do the right thing. So I applaud you and.
Well, I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
I've respected you for almost four years now, anyway. Um, councilmember Anruso?
I've got nothing. Good, thank you.
Councilmember Sim?
I think what the mayor's trying to say is you can't leave it in here.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm out of, I'm out of air.
I don't have a report, because I haven't been to any meetings between the, the last two, uh, two meetings, so, for it. I'm good, thank you.
Um, and then what I have to report is that I think, um, Margaret and I had a meeting this morning with, um, a couple of gentlemen from, um, the Department of Homeland Security. Um, specifically the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, which I guess they call CISA, CISA, CISA? Something like that. Um, one of the gentlemen was able to be here in person. He, um, he's responsible for, uh, uh, I guess, physical security, whereas his colleague, um, who was with us on speakerphone for a little while until he had to go off to something else, um, handles the cyber security. Um, it was, I'm very appreciative of, of their time. Um, they, um, they have so much that they can offer us in the way of assistance, um, including assessments, um, physical assessments of all of our, our, our properties and our, our gathering places and all that. And then also assist us as assessments of anything that might be, uh, along the lines of cyber security. Um, and, um, he already had some recommendations this morning, in fact, I see that one has already been put into place, which is amazing, and it has to do with safety. Um, and educated us about why this is important and what's happening domestically. Um, they're also able to assess, um, assist with doing some training. Um, specifically, um, de-escalation situations, active assailant, assailants. And, um, we talked to us about, um, Stop the Bleed training. Um, they're available to, to do tabletop exercises, drills, exercises. And just a, a, a great resource, couple of, um, just great, warm, helpful guys. I happen to know one of them from outside of the city, and so that's where the connection was made. Um, so anyway, I'm really excited about that. Um, for, eh, for a small town, we're, we're able to tap into this great resource. So that was, that was great. Um, I don't know, anything you want to add to that? You're, you're, you want me to go back to you? Okay. Um, so that is all that I have for my report. Um, it looks like Margaret has remembered something.
RFP, RFP for IT services is going out tomorrow morning. I'm very excited about that one. Although I did forget it.
That's okay. Um, okay, um, request for future agenda items, councilmember White.
I have none at this time.
Councilmember Anruso?
None at this time also.
Councilmember Sim?
I have nothing ready.
And I don't have anything either. So it's seven thirty-seven and the meeting has now adjourned.